To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in just this world. I was at the right place anyway.
We're gonna have Pledge of Allegiance etiquette now.
Yes.
At least it wasn't me this time.
No, it was me.
I'm gonna open the meeting to go over the fire budget. Everybody second my opening?
Yeah.
Alright, so do we just wanna start at the top and go right down through here?
However you wanna do it.
Chief, why don't you wanna give me the scoop on that?
Yes, with the amount of training and stuff like that and responsibility in town, and talking with chiefs from outside that do half the calls, and Atkins chief makes $65,000, they do half the calls, Bruick doesn't run EMS and they do $70,000, and that's just the salaries, that's not their benefit package, then I thought that, you know...
I get it, I do have concern about it, I'm concerned about leveling and trying to push it, I understand what you're saying, but I do know how it could not go, I don't know if we should go that far, or...
Well, that was, you know, what's your suggestion?
I don't know, I really just kinda dug right into it, but I didn't impop at some section, so...
Yeah, I don't wanna go through what we went through last year.
Me either.
And the fire department, I get, is not, the standings aren't much better than they were last year.
Oh, we've come a long way over the...
Not with the public.
Oh, you know...
That's what you're gonna go by.
Every day we're gaining, I mean, the $2,000 bill is totally gone, we're making all our calls, right now we're over 600 calls, and more than three quarters of that is the medical side of it, yesterday during a storm, we went mutually with the ambulance to Bruick. So, you know, I don't, you know, like I always said, there's 7,000 people in town, it's hard to have every one of them come talk to you so you could explain all this stuff, but...
What are you asking for an increase, chief?
Well, from 47, you're gonna make me put my glasses...
Sorry.
Forty-seven, four seventy-six to fifty-five thousand.
How many hours you putting in, real hours?
Real hours in the office, the same, between 50 and 60 hours, and then, I mean, if you go, when I go home, and the radio's on, and I'm answering phone calls and everything else, you know, the radio's on to any bigger calls, mutually and stuff like that, so, it isn't that I just leave the office and shut everything off, you know, you can't do that.
I've asked at times off and on through the year, and you told me things like, I think the lowest number I heard was probably around 65 hours for any given week.
Yep.
I'm not saying you don't deserve it, what I'm worried about is this, not that, so...
You know, I agree with Paul, I'm not saying that either, I'm just, I'm concerned about it.
I don't care about the...
I question you, would be a question about it, really, I mean, if you guys didn't think that he was doing his job, then why didn't you go look, you both kept stuff and talk to him occasionally, haven't you?
That's not what we just said.
Not what we said?
Are you saying you don't think what he does is worth the money?
No, that's not what we said about it.
Well, I'm kinda curious about how this is always gonna come out, see what's...
No, I mean, I understand.
I mean, I don't, you know, I don't mind trying it, and going, you know, and see what happens, but my fear would be that, you know, and we gotta go down to the rest of the budget anyways, to see, but, you know, the budget, the bottom line goes up a lot, and I don't know how that's gonna fly, so I'm just trying to look at every step that's going up to make sure...
So, what's the budget committee gonna do? What's their job?
They're gonna look at it too, so it's our job to look at it too, to make, you know, and that's what I'm trying to do.
You talk about not going through what you did last year, part of the reason was because of what went on last year, and it could very well go on again.
Well, I don't know, but I'm just trying to go through the budget.
We're trying to avoid it.
Well, if you are, then perhaps you ought to support your fire chief instead of coming out against him.
We're not saying we're not supporting the fire chief, well, I'm not against him at all, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that we need to look at budgets, and we have to go through every one of that.
Not just him, but all the people in the departments, we're talking about a combined department these days, not...
Absolutely.
Not just the fire department, like I hear come out in the conversation most of the time.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna move along.
So, last year, trying to reorganize and anything else, we put a bunch of pays in together, but I had done away with it, it should be, instead of deputy chief, it should be assistant chief, because we don't have a deputy chief. Put that line back in, just so, keep track of that, that's money designated for that one person.
Yeah, where did we pay him from last year? We did, we did...
He's coming out, he's coming out of the on-call.
Okay, 'cause we pay him $125 a week, correct?
Yeah.
Well, that stay, they're saying now?
No, it went up $25 a week.
So, it went to 150?
Yes, he's taken on a lot of, you know, not a lot of duties, but extra duties and stuff like that, so, he's also handling some of the medical stuff, so, we kinda split, I take it, I oversee everything, but he helps me on the medical side of it, if that makes sense. Any questions or anything else that comes up on the medical side, they have somebody that you can go to.
So, is he the medical, 'cause back on third, on the third page, not the jumper head, but you have a medical director?
A medical director, that's a doctor, that's our medical director that oversees the whole EMS program in Lebanon.
And who is it?
Doctor Hamilton, out of Sanford.
'Cause we've never paid them.
He hasn't, I'm waiting for a bill from him.
So, do you think he'll send us a bill for this year?
Yeah, before the end of this budget, yes.
Okay, 'cause we, I'm looking at what we spent, we haven't spent nothing, so, he will just bill us once for this amount?
Yes, yep, and he comes in, he's gonna start doing, he's gonna try to do, every other month, come in, he's gonna give us training, lectures, and he's also reviewing some cases that, if we have questions on how it went and stuff like that, he's gonna review it, so he's a great asset, he was an EMT and everything else, so...
Does he have his own listing, any sort of idea?
Yes, under medical director.
Medical director.
Third page, the top one.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yep.
What was that number again on here? Oh, we don't know.
Five thousand, wasn't it?
Five thousand, that's what it says right there.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was approved last year, just, we just haven't did anything to it, but, I don't need that.
Yeah, with reviewing the on-call status and the number of calls and stuff like that, I'm hoping not to go over this year, but just by going call by call and looking at next year, the 23 is a closer number.
'Cause it was 15?
Yeah.
I don't know, sorry.
But we are doing more calls, you know, every year the call rates go up, so... The next one is the day shift, the people that work for DM, and the reason for the jump is that we get some really, really good people, but it's trying to keep a paramedic, or trying to get better paramedics to come to town, and talking with other services and that, they're paying between 18 and 25 dollars an hour, to have good paramedics come in and work, 15 dollars an hour is what we're offering now, and we're not really keeping them.
How many do we have there all the time?
We've got one now, not all the time, but right now on Fridays.
The calls, the calls to Sanford, that's for paramedics?
Yeah.
You have, like, one a week?
If that, yeah, a couple times a month. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but you don't have any one...
We have a paramedic, but they don't work for us seven days a week, so when they're not there, and we need paramedics, we, it's either Sanford, Frisbee, Acton we're starting to use.
Well, why don't you call Frisbee, they don't charge you?
Well, we do, but it depends on the severity of the incident, if you're having a heart attack, do you wanna wait another 10 minutes for a paramedic that's not gonna charge you? You know what I'm saying?
Depending on what side of town.
So, it has to go, it has to go on, the people on, that get there, if they can wait for Frisbee, they'll call Frisbee, or they'll call Acton, but if they need somebody there right away for pain control, then they'll call Sanford.
Yeah, but the people that get there right away, somebody's having a heart attack, can they touch them?
Yes.
Even if they're not paramedic?
Yes, EMTs are trained, me, I'm trained, I can do CPR, and I can use the ED, yeah, the only thing I can't do is administer medication.
And a lot of these situations where a paramedic's called in, well, every situation where a paramedic is called in, this is beyond what our people can do. You have advanced people, but they don't, they still can't...
Yeah, advanced people can still give, they can give some medication, but not anything a paramedic can give, so...
And that's the reason a paramedic is called in.
So, like, if, if, I'm a, I'm an EMT, so if I show up, I can, I can give you CPR, I can hook up the ED and shock you, I can intubate you with tubes, but I can't give you any medication. So, with this increase, would increase the pay on the paramedic side of it, hopefully that we can get at least another paramedic to work off of the other one.
Okay, so I can have a question.
What's that?
About that increase, only because I'm looking at, we're halfway through the year now, not saying that it wouldn't, and you know best, but, you know, our current budget was 167.7.
Yeah.
We've spent 73.5, so, you know, if you double that, it's only like 150,000, everything's spent, we're not even gonna go over by the looks.
But, the thing is, we shouldn't go over right now, but we haven't had a paramedic seven days a week.
So, that's what you're asking?
So, that's what we're looking for.
Right.
You know, that's what, eventually, we would, we would want is a, one or two paramedics, you know, even five days a week, to work off from each other, you know, at least 40 hours a week, each. That's where I, that's where we're eventually gonna see this go, unless you don't wanna have a paramedic service, and then we just pay for another service, but I can see that...
Then you're gonna pay it out to other paramedics and other towns anyways.
Yeah.
All the people that work for you?
Yeah.
They all can do what you said you can do?
Most of them, or more, because I have As which can give some medication, but they can do everything I can do, plus a little bit more, paramedics can do everything I can do, everything the A can do, and more.
I think he's asking about the basics, is that what you mean?
Yeah, the basics, yeah, anybody that's a basic...
People that have just come in, haven't got all the training yet, is that what you mean?
No, I just wanted to know how much they can do.
Yeah, so I'm a basic...
I mean, if you come in, they hire you today, they're not equivalent to what he can do, that's what I'm getting at.
Right, and it varies from person to person, you've got a lot more, you've got, I don't know, how many basics have you got now?
Quite a few.
Is it?
Yeah, so...
And advanced?
Advanced, a few, and I have, I have two in class, and I've got two that'll be testing after the holidays, so...
Plus all the regular EMTs.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's the reason for that, and that's the reason why you're seeing that it doesn't look like we've been spending a lot, is because we haven't had a paramedic that will, that worked 40 hours, you know, and this is what this is geared And then the nighttime schedule stays the same.
I think what Dan's saying also is that this Sanford cost that we're being charged is gonna be cut down by hiring, making sure that we've got a paramedic of our own on duty more.
Well, and that's fine, as long as it's cut down whatever in our budget.
Yeah.
When we get to that spot, I'm sure it's, right?
So, moving right along.
It's not a set, see? I didn't think so, that's why.
Traveling expenses staying the same?
Alright, yes.
Training staying the same?
Yeah.
I don't know about payroll taxes, they're already figured out here, but I hadn't figured them out when I did mine. Office surplus, supplies I mean, janitorial supplies the same, fuel the same, fire supplies, I took that out.
Yeah, it was out last year, though, so, that's fine, yeah.
Medical supplies, I went up, $5,000, and here's a reason why, medical stuff is very expensive, very expensive, the ambulance brings in between $9,000 and $10,000 a month, that all goes into the general fund, that of it comes back to us to help offset these costs, so because of the prices of these, of the stuff, we need to increase, because this also includes the medications and everything else that we purchase.
Somebody should start managing more.
Oh, yeah, medical supplies, I don't have any, you know, I get it.
So, are you ready?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, the electrical, the heating, the same?
The electrical, you think it'll change, because we probably, if you look at what you've spent in a half a year, you've only spent 17.33.
Well, that's one of my things, is that I don't often see how much...
Oh, expense report?
Yeah.
You can have Jordan give you one every year, or every month or something.
I'm gonna start, just because I'm missing that part of the equation.
Yeah, well, electricity, we've only spent quarter, you know, and this was just printed, so we've spent 17, not even $2,000, so I mean, you probably could change your electricity to like 4,500.
I can do that.
I mean...
And then if we, just out of side note, I had an electrician come in to fix an outlet that we had a problem with, he suggested we change all the lighting in the bay at station one, which would also help with the electrical payment.
So, do you wanna change that 4,500?
Sure.
Electricity? 'Cause you haven't even spent...
Yeah, so what, on the heating fuel?
Yeah, here we go, here's another one, you haven't seen this?
No.
Okay, so what this says, now if it's correct, which it should be, 'cause dated now, I mean, probably heat fuel's coming up, it says you have, you're approved at 10.5, we've only spent 1,392, so...
That doesn't make much sense.
It really doesn't.
Well, that only covers the year up to now.
And that only covers oil, that's only the oil, so...
By the warm weather.
That's only the oil part of it, so, we could eat through that, depend on how this, this is gonna go.
Well, this is propane and oil?
No, this is just oil.
This is just a heating fuel.
You're only looking...
'Cause propane should be on the next page, the bottom, yeah.
You're only looking at the warm half of the year on this, now we're, now we're actually in winter, where the costs do almost, or what, they double or more?
Yeah, and the, the building's not really airtight, so...
Yeah, neither one of them.
And we try not to keep it overly heated, you know, we have to keep it at a certain temperature for the, for the ambulances, because they have medications and that on it, but...
So, should we look maybe at an expense report from...
Let me work it, yeah.
I wouldn't do it last year, I would do it like two or three years ago, we had all that snow and the cold.
Yeah, I'll work it out with Jordan.
Yeah, and see if we can, you know, because...
Well, you should need to do price comparisons, too.
Yeah, well, yeah, you do, and I think oil now is cheaper than it was then.
I think you're right.
I mean, it's gone down, so I mean, we might be able to have a little bit of flexibility in there, so if you wanna play with that a little bit...
Yeah, I will.
But I would tell them to go back in here, look at the last two, three years' expense reports for that, and see what we've got in that building, so that we can maybe save a little bit of money there.
Best bill things.
Yes, the buildings, sorry.
Yeah.
Alright, where are we?
The phone?
Yeah.
I did an increase only because I saw those bills, and the 1620 didn't make sense, the 18 did, and it's just something different.
Current budget, no, you're correct, I think, it was 1620, we spent 685.64, so we'll make it, if it stays every month, it won't change, will it?
Right, I hope not.
So, really, you probably can still get away with your 1620, 'cause you're not gonna go over, you've got 934 still in there, so do you wanna change that?
I'll change that to 1620.
1620, we won't change that phone? And your propane, which is 1520, you wanna look over, you know, blah, 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 blah. What do we use for propane, oh, we haven't spent any.
We should have, the propane is for the generators, and the heat upstairs in station two, our stove at station one.
Can you, when you asked him about that fuel, can you ask him about that propane?
That should be different.
Well, yes, because...
That's a different company, isn't it?
Because what happened was, is, I guess he didn't change it.
I didn't change that, you know, I think I put it under, I didn't really have...
Yeah, you put it under, we have air gas...
Okay.
Which is our, the people that do our oxygen, and then we have, I think, AmeriGas, that does our, so he mixed it up, so, yeah.
So, we did pay some on that, then?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just let it be, I don't know what we paid, but, I don't know. Where are we, oh, we have office equipment, is that where you are?
Yeah, nothing.
Building maintenance, you know, now.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But anyways...
Well, there's a proposal to get the roof done with the other building.
Well, I don't want to do that right now, let's just do this budget, I don't want to do that.
So, you're working on, like, you know, yeah.
Yeah, maintenance agreement, I don't know of any maintenance agreement.
Alright, so building maintenance?
Yes, 10,000.
You spent five, we're gonna leave it, just, you still have five to spend, building maintenance, so...
Yeah, and we'll be doing lights and that, so, and I think I got a couple POs in now for some building maintenance stuff. Maintenance agreement, I don't know of any maintenance agreements, so, nothing. Vehicle maintenance from 15 to 20.
That, that isn't to do with your radio stuff, is it?
No, no, vehicle maintenance from 15 to 20, our vehicles are getting old and tired.
You should get this expense report, because I can only tell you, you've already spent 14, 799.21, so you're all gonna be in there, you're not gonna make it.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if there's another spot in here, or if you have something that...
I believe so.
Go under a different spot, maybe, we'll have to take a peek, so, that way it doesn't look, you know?
Radio maintenance, from 2,000 to 3,000, our radios are getting old, we...
Hold on, I know that they've done them.
We had to toss a bunch of them, 'cause they were broken, antennas were broken, batteries didn't last, so, I did do a grant for $50,000 for new radios, but I haven't heard anything yet.
So, are you gonna use, see, you haven't used any of your radios yet this year?
I should have.
Well, you've used $87, according to my record.
You may, you may have more coming in.
Okay, so...
I think this $500 allotment thing here, allowing people to spend that, your department heads, that's why this stuff isn't showing up, like, before we used to have receipts on, we used to have bills.
No, we do, we do, this is a current expense report.
Well, you say you're not seeing, you keep saying you don't see stuff.
Yeah, I do, I, he spent 87, he's saying that maybe he's just got a PGO in that hasn't gone through yet, or we haven't paid it yet, that's all.
So, SCBA maintenance, they'll leave the same as the 1,000, the SCBAs are new, we have plenty of, we get a lot of masks, this will cover any more masks that I need. Equipment maintenance, going up $1,000, just to help pay for equipment. Office equipment, 2,000, that stays the same. Firefighter equipment went up, because the stuff's getting expensive, I did, right now, I ordered four sets of gear, and just the jacket and the pants alone is 1,600 each, and that's, that's $200 cheaper than Globe, which is good style.
What happens when you have, you know, your employees, you get through the training, and then they just go, I mean, what happens with their equipment and stuff?
It gets recycled for the next person.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure of, they don't just go, 'cause it's fitted, isn't it?
Yeah.
Isn't most of it fitted and stuff, so we can, we can recycle it.
So, we gotta kinda find somebody with that same build.
Oh, my God, we're all advertising, six foot one, this much weight, you know, but that, you know, I just want to make sure that...
We all fit them with boots, gloves, hood, helmet, the bunker clothes itself, so, just a jacket and the bunker pants with suspenders is 1,600, and like I said, this is a different company that I'm using, so, which is still a good company, they're not Globe, but they fit a little better than Globe, but they are a little cheaper, so, but like the medical stuff, the fire equipment is just expensive, you know, it has to meet the NFPA standards. Fires, I mean, safety equipments, leave it at 1,000. The services that we have, staying the same.
The outside services?
Yeah.
That's where we're at, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, it's good, I'm good, yeah.
Technology maintenance, we're gonna leave it the same.
Oh, but, technology, last year, did we move it or something, 'cause I don't even have it on...
Oh, no, it's called, I think it's called something else.
Okay.
Jordan?
What?
Technology?
You just had, you used to have technology, and then last year, I think, I wasn't gonna do the budgets last year, now it's like that maintenance, I think?
Okay, so, I'll just find it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, let's move back up to the next line.
Yeah, services and then, okay.
Criminal background checks, zero, because they're not, they don't charge us.
Oh, good.
So, we did away with that. Paramedic in a set, we're gonna leave it the same, the 7,500.
What's that for?
That's when we have to call in Stanford.
But if we hire, I don't for the most part.
Then we can start getting rid of that.
But, do you think because we're increasing the other one for a paramedic to hire, that we can decrease this one a little bit?
And I decreased it last year.
You're gonna get rid of this, but you're gonna increase it on the other side.
Yeah.
This has already been a decreased budget, last year, they had to cut.
My, my issue is, is that I'd hate to cut it and now have a pass, and then turn around and not get the paramedic, you know what I'm saying, and then go over on this, unless we can take some of that, if we don't, we can use some of that money on this line. See what I'm saying?
Well, you know, and the only thing I'm saying is that, and I, I mean, you can move it a little bit, but, is that if you're, if we are going to tell the public, we're increasing this line, or the budget committee even, we're increasing this one because of this, but then we're not changing for the paramedic, they're gonna say, oh, well, okay, we're increasing to hire them and have them, but now we're not decreasing here just in case, so we're kinda fluffing the budget, which we need to fluff a little, but not, I mean, I don't know, I think, I mean, I think you could decrease it a little bit, I mean...
Well, we can, we can take that chance.
I hate taking chances.
I know, me too.
But, I'm concerned, I really am, but...
Well, so, the, the, the main issue is, is that...
What's Sanford's bill at right now?
What's what?
Yeah, what are we expel for?
That's what, that's what, this is to cover, a good part of it, Jordan?
375.
Yeah, I know, that's how much we...
375 a trip, how much do we, how much have we paid Sanford so far?
Oh, we've paid 5,625 out of this.
Already, and it's only a half year.
But what I'm saying is, if we hire a paramedic, which won't go on this line, goes on the other line, so they're kinda...
Eventually, that will go away, hopefully, you know, we'll get, we'll get, you know, a couple of paramedics that are, and then we won't have this line no more.
But it won't change the bottom line, because you're gonna...
Not right this, not, not this one, right here, yeah, next year, you know, if we can get the paramedics at...
You get, you have to get a paramedic first.
Alright, okay, just a question.
Oh, no, 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 you know, and I thought of that too, because, I mean, I decreased it from last year, I mean, I decreased, what I did last year is I decreased it.
I guess I'm playing devil's advocate.
Oh, no, go right ahead.
I'm thinking, you know, what they're gonna ask you?
Yeah.
And what we're gonna talk about when we have our hearing, the budget committee and all that.
Yeah, and I mean, I mean, we can, we can, you know, take two runs off.
And then we have billing fees, now billing fees are transport fees, correct?
No, yes, that's what we, that's what we've been charged...
From Sanford?
No.
It's from that.
That's from Comstyle.
Oh, Comstyle, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, but like I said, you know, a lot of people have to understand is that in most, in most towns, your ambulance, um, a portion of all of it goes in to help the budget for the department. Here, it all goes into general fund, so it helps the bud- it helps the taxpayer in a different way.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but we wiped out some money that you couldn't collect too, you know?
Well, yeah, you're not gonna, you know, I, if, if we collected everything, we'd probably make fifteen thousand dollars a month.
Okay, so billing fees, you don't have the expense report?
No.
Okay, so let me tell you right now, current budget, forty-eight sixty, we've already spent forty-nine ninety-six, we're already in the red. So, and you're leaving it? The same?
Well, I can work it out with him and see what, I'll give Comstyle, yeah.
I mean, it's showing, it's only six months through the year.
Yeah.
Your calls have almost doubled.
And that's just the thing. We've gone up like thirty-six calls from last year already, so.
So I mean, you might, yeah, could you investigate that for us before?
I'll look at it, yeah. The medical director?
We do, we talked about that.
Yeah. Uh, postage, the same. Um, the dues and subscriptions, that's everything that we belong to, plus getting the magazines and stuff like that. Uh, what I did was I took away the debt service, the FRI collections, which we, which we don't use. And I put it on that line with the dues and subscriptions.
Okay.
And then the physical exams and that, those are for the new hires and, uh, testing, so that's three thousand dollars.
Okay. How many do, employees do you really have?
Thirty-five.
So you need to also, when you're talking to Jordan about that, because there is some rules that we can only have so many to do with, um-
Yeah, we've already been talking.
You have talked about that, okay, because we need to make sure we don't go over that for ourselves, so.
Well, this is, and like I explained to him, this is a double-edged sword.
Yes.
Because if I don't have enough people-
I know, I know.
Then we can't get the calls. If I have-
Too many.
Too many.
Then we're in trouble the other way, so, um.
Right now, there's two people in the station, right around the clock.
No. I have two shifts, one starts at six in the morning, gets over at two. The next one starts at two, goes at ten o'clock at night, then at night, they cover from home. And on weekends, they cover twelve-hour shift, so six in the morning, six at night, and six at night to six in the morning from home.
So they come from home?
Yeah.
They have to come to the station-
Whichever one's closer to them.
-vehicle?
Yeah.
And-
We, we don't have the facility to put them up. We don't have showers, we don't have-
And also on your responses, they're usually only one person comes in and grabs the ambulance.
And then the other one, because they're closed.
The other one goes directly.
Yeah, and then if they're living, like, sometimes we'll have most of the people there at that end that are covering, but if somebody from this end is covering, and somebody's that end for covering, they'll work out who's gonna grab the ambulance and who's gonna go to the scene.
They have to talk between each other.
Yeah.
They do it ahead of time.
Yeah, they do it ahead of time. That works out well.
Okay, so, that's the last thing. Debt service and collection, do you know what, oh, sorry, go ahead.
The other thing, I asked for, uh, Alyssa, your rolling stock? Have you got it?
Um, if you're gonna do that, could you, could you send it to me?
I did.
Well, I was told that you came in and asked for it.
No, no.
And-
The girl wrote it, and I says, would you give this to Dan? All she did was write it.
So, and I, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll just explain, and I'll give you a copy, and if you guys want a copy, you guys can make a copy. So what I have here is rolling stock, I expect you wanna know what we had for apparatus? Ambulances and fire trucks. I also put the year and how many people they carry, okay? So like ambulance one is a two thousand four Ford, carries two people. Ambulance two, a two thousand ten Chevy, two people. Engine two is a two thousand six International, seven hundred and fifty gallons of water, two people. Take five, an eighty-nine Volvo, twenty-two hundred gallons, two people. Take six is a ninety-seven Ford, three thousand gallons, two people. The forestry is a two thousand three Ford, F five fifty, three hundred gallons of water, and it's three passengers. The squad is a two thousand twelve Ford, five passengers. Cow one is a two thousand ten Ford, five passengers. The ATV, two thousand eight Polaris, two passengers. The boat is a two thousand. Uh, currently, um, the thermal imager is out of service, does not work correctly, it's too old. The two's old monitor units, which is the hot monitors, which are the hot of the ambulance. Uh, they're fourteen years old and they get serviced regularly, and I just got a plan to buy two new ones. The CO and gas meters are out of service and the old, I have a PO in to buy a new one. And, uh, the two tough books, uh, one for each ambulance, one is out of service till computer people can take a look at it. And then some stuff from, uh, the, um, notification service that we use, every time a truck goes out of service, they're supposed to log it, so it gets printed out, but that's also included on this too. So you guys can make copies for everything.
You wanna make copies for us? I'd like to have some copies.
Oh, I thought you, uh-
Oh, I only made one.
Go ahead, yeah, make copies.
Oh, you wanna know something, wait a minute, can I give you the right one? Hey, wait a minute, Royce, I got another one right here.
I'm on four copies.
Same thing.
Yeah. I guess I had two copies, I'm sorry.
I do have a question, kind of off the beaten path, that, um, we used to do, I don't know how you felt about it, I think I sent you an email a long time ago, but probably just got whatever. Do you remember, and you probably weren't here, when we used to do the ambulance subscription? I'm just thinking, I wonder if we should do that to help raise money?
You gotta be very careful with that.
Yes.
And an ambulance ride-
Questions about that.
An ambulance ride is around twelve hundred dollars, alright? So are you gonna charge people twelve hundred, or are you gonna charge them forty dollars?
Well, what happens is what we, you know, did in the past, and what, um, we do too, um, is that we charge the insurance company and get what we cannot, the insurance company, and then they, if they get the subscription, then we don't get anything from them. So I'm just talking about it, just saying, what do you think about it?
I don't think it's a good idea, I think that it's gonna put a little burden on the department, um, and on the town.
Yep. That was one of the thing, one of the betting things that came up as questions a couple of years back. Because there was no really, really good way to track what was going on there with that money.
Well, it depends on who you have tracking it, where it's coming and going.
You know, plus people can buy a yearly subscription for X amount of dollars, but I think that you get more benefit from the insurance company, the way that we're doing it now, the current way of doing it.
You know, we asked this guy where, where he's getting his wages from, where he wants, where he wants more wages. His time is spent, how much of your time is spent just on doing paperwork?
Oh.
And blowups and all that.
Ninety-five percent of the job.
But-
But no, I don't think, I mean, I've had a few people ask me that same thing, and I think that, you know, if we're gonna do fundraises, there's a better way to do it than, you know, um, why don't we, what, why don't we, um, you know, we're bringing in nine to ten thousand dollars a month. We could take half of that and put it in a revolving fund, um, for the department and be able to, um, with the CIP money, and be able to use that to designate for, you know, medical expenses, so if we-
For a building?
For a building.
Because we need a building?
Yes.
We need to eliminate two.
And before we go much further, how much is the town paying for insurance to cover all the people in this fire department? And the fire, and EMS? Because that is being absorbed by the town.
Yes.
Right. That's another thing, before we go start breaking money out in different ways, that is a big thing.
No, I know that, yeah.
We need to care and discuss that one.
No, most definitely with the, with the buildings, I mean, the buildings were good for their day, and now they're, they're old, they're old.
Sure are.
What about the floor?
That's a corporation.
Yeah, I know that.
They have no money.
Just three copies, you can have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan.
Oh, thanks, I get a copy too.
No, you don't have to.
Oh, thank you, Paul.
The corporation has no money to fix it. Yeah, right. So, right now, we're waiting, I mean, like I, like we've taught, uh, my winter project is to start working on the ground floor of a new building.
The what?
A new building, new fire station. So everything can be right there, rather than having trucks down at the other end, trucks up here.
It won't happen.
Well, I don't think we're gonna have a choice at some point. Honestly, because we're not.
Just because of our, it may not happen.
What are you doing, holding the town back? Is that what you wanna do?
You know-
Don't wanna pay for services?
It may not happen, but you're not gonna, you're not gonna know unless you start.
That's right.
You know, I, you know, if, if you don't start the process, it's just gonna push you further and further, further behind.
Well, safety is very important.
It is.
I mean, it's very important, and, you know, it's, it's, um-
You know, the, the people of this town deserve to have the best, you know, that's why these people are going to school, you know, and trying their best, and, um, working hard, you know, you guys have seen me, so.
That's for sure. You don't just jump in a fire truck these days and go running down the road, you don't jump in an ambulance and go, go answer a call. You have to have training all around, you can't, you can't even get in the truck without training.
I can't even do my job without training. I know, I'm on training.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and I, I do have a lot of older people coming in that says, you know, well, we'll help out what we can, you know, we'll, we'll stretch a line, but the problem is, is that, that's great, but it's not the, you know, nineteen sixties anymore, nineteen seventies. It's, it's the training that goes behind it, you know, I've got, I've got four in class right now that's going to, uh, fire school, and that runs from December first till May, the end of May. That's a long time to get out, that's two nights a week, plus weekends. You know, I've got people in EMA, EMT school that go two nights a week.
And they're paying, they're paying their own way too, on, on travel and all that stuff.
Yeah, so, we get some really good dedicated people, so, we'll get there.
Okay. So you're gonna talk to Jordan about-
Yeah, I'm hoping for some of this stuff.
-a few propane and that kinda stuff?
You wanna read again?
Um, you let Sue know, and she can put you on the thing, and we'll just buzz right down through here again and, and get it, the total correct and-
Is there a, um, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw this out to you, is there a percentage you'd like to see? Do you wanna, somewhere? You wanna get back to me on that?
On the bottom line?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking me? Do you want your expense report, you can have my notes you might want to get done.
Yeah, I'll get it.
Um, me, as a taxpayer and as a person that's been here for a long time, I know a lot of these people here. I wouldn't want a very high percentage, I can't think right at it, I mean, I know, you know, there is still, and, and not, and not, not supporting, don't get me wrong, don't, no, I do. I just know what can happen, I mean, we've been here, and I know how they feel, and I know that, you know, this town is-
Like, like last year, when they voted and went down in town meeting, and then turned around and voted to keep, to keep what we had left? Yeah.
Last year, I took out about thirty-five thousand dollars.
If the people had been informed, the vote might have gone a little bit different too. People may, the, these people that get out and vote on this stuff need to know what's going on too. You have got a more open budget than anybody else that I know of in town. And it still went the way it did.
So, what would help, you know?
And that was on recommendation of our budget committee. That had a big part to do with it.
The, um, I think one thing that would help, not just myself, but other departments-
And the selectmen.
This is the increase that would, you know, we know that there's gonna be an increase, stay within these boundaries. Stay within.
Give it to him.
Oh, sorry, Dana.
Oh, may I ask how many locations you are considering right now for a central station? And are you considering a substation, a new substation somewhere?
Um, well, it's always been, e- even when I, even when I got hired, I said that it'd be, it, you know, a new station is needed, and a substation needed, you're not gonna get them both at the same time. So you build a new substation, and then later on, you build a substation, 'cause I like to see a substation up on the other side. So, mu- you know, having, having a central station right on two oh two before it takes off and blows up would be a good location. Um, so that's one of the places that we're looking at, is two oh two. Um, we're right on the highway, you know, which, we do a lot of our calls anyways, and we'd be able to hit any part. You know, if we put it on a side road, then we're really gonna tax that road, and that road's gonna be beefed up and stuff like that with the amount of vehicles going over it. Um, I know that, um, we had been talking, just, me and Mike, just because of, he had the tax map on and stuff like that, just looking at stuff. But we thought there was twenty-six acres here, but I'm, I'm hearing that it's not twenty-six acres, so, 'cause we thought maybe we could use the back part and put a central station there, and this way we can be right on the center road.
You know, a real good place? Going in the transfer station.
Yeah, but you really, then you'd have to come, every time there was a fire or something, you're coming off of that road, down those houses, and it's pretty narrow, you know, that side.
You don't, you don't those roads, you have to make them bigger, you'd wanna connect a road going from there to the other side, so you could have access from both sides.
There's a possibility, if you work two oh two, that in order to get to this location, that maybe work the Mills Road and get that bond.
The, the thing is, is that-
Save a lot of time.
When you're doing a, when you're doing a station now, you wanna, you, you don't wanna think about what's gonna, what's gonna be good for this year and next year, it's for seventy-five years.
Yes.
When you build it, because it's, it's a, it's-
Huge.
It's a huge endeavor, um, that you wanna make sure that when you build it, you're gonna have it for a very long time.
It's also possible to fund this a lot different than people think it's gonna be funded, it can be done on a bond.
Well, yeah, that's-
So much to hear, so much to hear.
You have to, because it's big money.
Right.
And then with the bonds, if you wanted to, and other departments have done this, is they've got, they, they purchased a fire truck, or they purchased town equipment with that, with that, on that, on that bond.
So you, go ahead. So I was specifically looking for number. Number of different spots that you're considering.
Oh. So you're gonna nail me right down, huh?
Not that's the location.
No, no, well, right now, um, and what would help is the, um, comprehensive plan, to tell us how many, how many stations we need in town. Um, you know, I know that other towns have done it and, and stuff like that, and they've come back with, you know, three or four, you know, stations. You know, a central station and then, because it has to do with response time, which helps with your insurance, which helps with the NFPA rating and stuff like that. So, I mean, a town like this is fifty-five square miles. You know, maybe fifty-six, close to it, you know, you could be looking at three or four stations, so. But, right now, it's to think about a new central station, and then get that done, and then figure out, you know, maybe with a comprehensive plan or something, they tell us where the next station would be for response time because of the population in those areas.
So, how many locations?
How many locations?
In history, there was a baseball-
I guess I'm not understanding your question, because I can't, you know, I'm looking at something that we can be close to, 'cause Center Road's kind of the middle of the town. So something around that area, uh, for a central station? And then something maybe up towards, um, the backside of, of town.
County Street up that way.
Over by Milton and that? So, for a substation, to start. At least in my lifetime.
How many are you looking at at the moment?
At the moment, just one.
Lots of land.
Oh, lots of land, yes, oh, I've only looked at, I haven't called, I just looked at the, the, the map on there too.
Two locations that you are considering being available.
Yeah, only because there's signs up that says there's lands for sale. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, okay, now we, we got- Yeah, but I don't know if there's, you know, if somebody has a large piece of land they're looking at, developing or anything else, but I think that, I think the town-
We'd accept a donation, wouldn't we?
Yeah, but I think the town needs to, to own that land, you know, and to own the building, um, that's, that's the biggest thing, you know?
That's right.
So, that's, that's my thought.
The problem is, when you build a new building, within ten years, you're already undersized, even a, even something that, that-
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, I will be going and meeting with some other towns that have already started their process of building and stuff like that. Um, how, how they did it, their bargaining agents, how that went, and stuff like that, so it isn't something that we're gonna be like, this is the way it's gonna be, you know? This way, we have some education behind and done some research on it.
Have any other questions? I, I, I'll look at it and see, I, I mean, I think, but, um, you know, it concerns me, that's all. I mean, I just don't wanna go over again.
You know, yeah. You had, you, you had the, uh, thing on the, Foster's- You had, you, you had the, uh, thing on the, Foster's new ambulance, new fire truck, new firehouse.
Mm-hmm. Those were my goals. That wasn't the buy today. Those were goals down the line. You got to think forward.
Don't scare them so you can get this done.
You, you have to, you have to go, you know, you got to think forward and I plan on being here for a long time.
We got this new building because we got it for nothing.
Four hundred and, what, fifty thousand dollars worth of nothing, Paul? That was a real cheap building.
What you got too, basically.
Yeah. Three hundred and seventy first round and another hundred and twenty.
I just want to say this, is that whatever number you wind up coming up with, with the chief, whatever that number is that you guys all figure out together. Part of the problem why you can't get a decent vote in this town is because you get selectmen up there, one saying, oh, no, we can't do this. The other ones are saying, yeah, we can do this. And then you have budget committee and everybody's aggravated and arguing between you. The biggest deal towards getting some of this stuff done that needs to be done is unified leadership. And that means that you guys got to stand up there together and say, we went over this, we think this is necessary and this is good. You don't stand up there and hem and haw and say, oh, we know you're not going to vote for it. That's ridiculous. Stand up there and stand for your fire chief because one of these days he's going to be coming to your house and if the equipment stinks, fourteen-year-old heart monitors.
Don't preach to me.
I'm not preaching to you. I'm talking to the board and I have the right to do so.
We know that.
Thank you. I'm just saying, one of these days it's going to be one of you. And he's going to come there with a fourteen-year-old heart monitor and just like what happened to one resident of this town, they're going to be on the way to the hospital and the E M T is going to be banging on the heart monitor because it keeps shutting off. And I hope it's not you or you or you or somebody that you love that's in that bed while the E M T is banging on the heart monitor because it's fourteen years old and it doesn't work. And I, I've been accused of knowing insider information and insider information that I get is from listening to the scanner. I listen to it every single night and then I talk to people every single day. And if you did the same, you would hear the same problems that I hear every single day from people in this town who are tired of not having competent equipment. And then they get there and they don't know how to vote because the budget committee has six people that used to be on the fire department that haven't been there for eight years or whatever it is. And they're all saying no. And then the selectmen are wishy-washy. Come up with a number, work with your department head, come up with a number and then stand up there at that meeting and tell people, vote for this. Here's, let's give the vote back to the people. Here's the new freshman. Here's the senior selectman and we all stand for this. We want this. And that's how you're going to get that vote, to sit and, and whine and say, they're never going to do it. Of course they're never going to do it if you tell them they can get away with not doing it. They can't get away with it anymore. And they need you, their leader that they voted for, to stand up for them and say, this is what we need. They voted for you as their leader, lead them. That's all I'm going to say about that budget.
I'm just used to the selectmen or council, whoever I'm dealing with. We know that there's going to be an increase, this is where we'd like to see it type of thing, you know? That, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying because, um, there, there has to be an increase because of the, the, the cost of the stuff.
Cost of women, cost of everything.
Well, not just that, I mean, you put medical on it, you put fire on it and it, and it drives the sky high.
He went through the service costs.
We're not, we're not looking, you know, to be extravagant or anything else. We just want stuff to save lives, be able to save lives.
Yeah, and I.
Well, I don't.
I agree with you, Roy.
And I would like to have a budget that just passed, you know?
Well, me too.
Yeah.
And by the way, I'd like to say something. In defense of the board, I don't ever want to see a board in a town that agrees on everything that comes across in front of them.
That's what I said. It needs to be worked out here, is what I said.
Discussion, please let me finish.
You, go ahead, Roy.
This board, I think, is as fair as any of the rest have been. In fact, they may be a little bit more fair.
Mm-hmm.
We may have our little disagreements, but we do discuss things.
Mm-hmm. That wasn't what I said. What I said is.
It sounded like.
No, what I said now in answer to you, well, I know you don't want to hear, but I have the right to speak.
You do.
And what I said is that when you get up there in front of people, work it out here so that when you get up there in front of people, you're unified together as one board.
That's what we're doing.
That's all I was saying.
And what he was asking me about percentage, if you asked me personally, we have never discussed this because we're just going all this budget down.
I know that's.
I would never want to see a budget go more than ten percent if you couldn't help it. Because ten percent is quite a bit too, no matter how you juggle it. That's what I would like to see. I mean, ten percent is a height when you talk about this.
And I would ask if you practice that all the way across the board.
Well, no, but different budgets do different things. But different budgets do different board things.
I respect my case.
Royce, I mean, but I would never see, want to see any budgets, not any of them. Some of them would be lower than, would, would be nothing because of their budget. But I wouldn't, wouldn't want any budget to go more than ten percent across the board.
I think it just helps the person coming in.
That is my opinion.
So, and to me, it helps to say, okay, well, you know, I, I went up twenty percent. They really wanted a ten. What can I do? Or, you know, stuff like that, rather than walking in and say, you know, they're like, oh, wow, you know, how, how can I take this back?
Well, that's why you bring it here and we kind of all look at it and talk about it and, and, you know, but you're right, you're probably right, it's just, yeah, yeah.
But I'll work with him on that and get this done.
Yeah, yeah. And then just schedule with Sue and then we can meet again quickly and go right down through there again and make sure we have the total bottom line the same. And I'll do it. Cause you're right, we need to go in the meeting and sell it as a group. You know, and, and if, if, you know, we'll all have differences, you know, sort of opinion, but, you know, we're all going to.
Well, and this, and, and, trust me, I understand that you're not in the same line of work that I am in, you know, knowing what goes along with one of these items. So, asking the questions doesn't, you know, because.
I don't know.
You don't know.
I don't know. And I wouldn't know because I'm not there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Perfect. Are we good? Good? Any other questions?
Are you saying the meeting's over?
Well, no, I have a chat.
No.
Are you going to, are you going to go over this?
Yeah.
Can you go a little bit?
Yeah, he's got to go see Jordan about his.
I'm going to talk to Jordan about a couple of things.
Couple of things in there. He's looked at his expense report and all that stuff. Yeah, he's going to tweak it some before.
Like I said, it's not the money. I, I don't want to come back because if we come back, you're going to get what they, what they give you. Right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I don't want to come back either. I don't want to do it and make him believe it and make him, you know, safety is first and that's the way it should be. Um, but, you know, we have to live within our, I mean, this is, I mean, to do it last year, it was a huge jump for them. To, for part-time to full-time was huge. And there's still a lot of people that will never vote yes on it. They will not. It's not going to happen. It's just the way it's going to be. You're always going to have that few people that are going to go in there and vote no one, everything anyways. But, you know, if we can convince them, I mean, look at all the brand-new houses, look at all the new young people, look at, you know, we've got to think about the future. We've got to think about, um, you know, how we're, where we're going. So, safety, it should be top priority, so, yeah. Okay. Should I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
How about public participation, which is on the.
Oh, I thought you already did.
No, I, I just talked to you about chief's budget.
Motion on the floor and it's been seconded.
Oh, I guess we got a motion and second, sorry. Sorry.
So, even though it's on the agenda, you're not going to hold to that?
Well, I just want a motion to adjourn and then he seconded, so I think we're all going.
We did ask you to.
Well, I thought we would, yes, we did.
Well, when Roy said, is the meeting done? I said I have questions and then Christine motions to adjourn and you seconded. I don't understand how that trumps your agenda, uh, to allow for public participation. And at one point you told me I couldn't speak because you guys were speaking, so I didn't and I waited until public participation and then that was never opened.
Yeah, well, I, well, I can reopen, one, I'll, I'll make a motion, we reopen the, reopen first.
Thank you.
Reopen by Paul. Um, for public participa, I thought you were done, I apologize.
No, that's okay. So, I actually, because this is the last meeting of the year, I just had.
Did you get a vote on that yet?
I haven't.
She didn't get a motion, a vote on the original motion either.
No, correct.
Thank you.
I think the wrong person, wrong end of the table, time of the table in the meeting.
Really, Royce?
Sometimes.
It says on the agenda, public participation, and it was never opened for public participation.
Okay, it's open. Now, let's.
Thank you. So, because this is the last meeting of the year, I had, um, some things to go over, things that I had, uh, found on my notes and on videos that had been left open and said that they were going to be looked into and then I think, I don't have the answer to any of them. So, the first one was, um, uh, you guys had discussed with Mike the possibility of hiring a sheriff or sharing with sheriff's offices with other towns, uh, to be kind of more centrally located. Um, and Christine, you had said that you were going to look into whether or not, um, that might be manageable and I just don't know if you had ever finished with that or if you had.
I did not.
Okay. Uh, also Sean Bright, um, has been asking about the moratorium and because the, uh, meeting is at, was started at three o'clock today and was tried to be over by four, he doesn't have a chance to get here. So, um, you, uh, said that you had given it to Mary, uh, you're waiting, you've been waiting. I'm wondering if that answer has come back.
I have something back from her and I have not read it yet.
Okay, so, uh, when do you intend to, uh, take that back up again, just so that I can let Sean know when you're.
I believe we're having a meeting next Thursday and it'll be the planning board will also be present, so we'll talk about the moratorium again then.
Okay, but it is back from legal, so that's a good, that's a positive direction.
Well, something's back, I'm not sure what it is, but something is back, yes.
Okay. Uh, also Metacast had given us a check for four thousand dollars back on eleven twenty-one. Uh, and have you, you gotten anything back as far, I know it was to wire everything, to get everything ready was a little over six thousand dollars and there was supposed to be some, uh, proposals made for how much equipment was going to cost, uh, and the like to get that done. I'm wondering where we stand on that because, uh, the check was, uh, given on eleven twenty-one, but it's been talked about prior to that. So, I'm just wondering where that money sits and if that's still sitting there at the end of the year, does that now get absorbed into general fund and now we can't use it?
No, we can use it and we'd have to use it all, but it is still there. Yep.
Okay, so where do we stand on, I mean, they gave us four thousand dollars to get this done, so.
Yes, but we have to figure out where we're going to take the other six from to do it.
Yeah, well, two thousand.
No, it's another six thousand on top of the four thousand, from my understanding.
No, the total was.
Equipment and another six to do what the rest is.
Yeah, it was six thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and change. They gave us four thousand, which leaves two thousand.
Well, I would have to talk to Mike about it.
And then plus equipment, correct? Then plus equipment on top of that.
Yes.
So.
I have to talk to Mike about it.
Okay.
So, it hasn't done anything.
Okay, uh, the water well testing on Upper Guinea Road that was due in October two thousand and sixteen, how do we stand on that?
We're waiting for her. She knows, she says, he went there several times.
I went for a second time.
Okay.
Within the last four days, there was no one home. When I went there, she said she was going to call Sue.
Yeah.
And she was happy.
Right, I remember that.
She was so bad.
So, here's my question. Where does us, I'm speaking us as a town, not as a board, where does our responsibility as a town end in testing that well? Is the state going to hold the town liable for not testing that well if we've made every attempt to, um, have her involved? I mean, what is our responsibility legally in getting that well tested in October two thousand and sixteen?
Well, I don't think we can do it without her letting us.
We can't do it without them.
Right, letting you on the property.
So, I mean, no, it's not.
As a matter of fact, we went beyond, we, we hired, we're going to hire someone professional to do it.
Right, Kattan.
That's it.
Right. I, I understand how far you've come and, and I'm not negating that. I think that's great.
So, we're just waiting for the homeowner to let us in.
I just don't know, yeah, I just don't know where, where the state gave us a date of October. I just don't know, like, are, are they going to give us trouble?
Well, they can't because it's not, it's her home, it's her water. So, I mean, they can't really give us trouble if we can't, she won't let us in there or she just hasn't.
I think that's the last one, it seems, that we get away with the ten thousand. Remember we used to pay ten thousand to monitor?
Right.
That's all.
And this is just the ending part of that.
Last one.
Right, right.
But we can't.
Okay. Okay, so, and then, uh, uh, New Bridge Road, they, uh, you know, the bridge. So, they had, um, given us a commitment now from D O T that they're going to put us on the work, uh, order for two thousand eighteen, nineteen is what the new order said that Sue read on the twenty-first of November. And they had.
Was it tentatively?
Yes.
Yes, it's a work order. It's a work order. It's not a guarantee.
Tentative work order.
Well, they call it a work order. I'm using their language. So their language says that we are now on the work order for 2018-2019 and they were looking for a letter of commitment from the town in order to kind of seal that. Has that letter been sent by the town yet to seal our commitment for $130,000?
No. I think we had asked them to actually write the letter, didn't we? I believe we asked them to write the letter to us to sign to do that commitment.
That's correct.
And they have not sent that yet?
We got to find a way to do it so we get the money right there. That's it. Because we can't just say sixty this year, seventy next year.
Correct.
Because next year, they can vote it out. You can start a CIT by any time you need to. We need to vote on the people.
Right. Right. So that's...
I didn't see the letter. That's what you're asking. You know, I didn't see the letter.
Yeah, but, so that's my thing is that he did send, and Sue read it. He did send something that said, "They've now kind of moved us up to 2018-19." But I know when he was in here, he asked for a letter saying that the town would put up the $130,000 if they put us on the work order. Well, now they're on that work order.
And we asked him to...
I don't know that he can write that letter, but, yeah, I'll just follow up on it. Anyway, next thing is, I had seen that you talked in, back in November, about putting on an assessing agent cost onto the ballot for appropriation and funding of an assessing agent. But I'm wondering if somebody is actually already working on that or if that's something that's not going to happen or...
We haven't talked about it as a board, really. We haven't talked about what we're going to put on our, when we do our ballots and do our budget yet. We haven't done it.
Okay. Also, Prospect Hill Cemetery, you had said back in November that you were going to look into where we at Milton were standing on the turnover of Prospect Hill Cemetery to Lebanon. And I'm just wondering...
We did get something. I just have an it's here somewhere because Sue had mentioned it to me, the lawyer's had sent her something. And I did talk to the lawyer the other day. She was bringing up Prospect Hill.
Okay, so where are we standing? Is Milton looking to turn that over in 2017?
I believe the lawyer was working on it and they probably almost done it once she had told me, so...
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, only got two more, or three more questions. So Harrison had asked about the ethics policy and he got no answer. My question about the ethics policy is, are you still requiring other employees to sign it at the time of employment or has that basically thrown by the wayside? I know that you've hired some new employees and I've asked them, they haven't been given a copy of it, so...
I would have to double-check. They shouldn't be given a copy of it when they're hired.
They should be being given a copy of it? And that are they required to sign it and turn it back in?
Well, no, you can't make anybody sign it. But, I mean, if, you know, I...
You're signing that you read it, that's all.
No. No. You're signing, if you read the ethics policy, you're signing that you understand it, that you were given it, and that you understand that it's a condition of your employment to abide by the ethics policy of the Town of Lebanon. So that's why I'm asking if all new hires or if only some people are being forced to sign it. You've hired more than two people.
I would have to check.
You have new people out in your town office, you have new people in your fire station, you have new people at your transfer station. I don't know where you're counting to, but my fingers count higher.
I was thinking of the fire station. I mean, the transfer station.
Right, but you have new people right here, right outside your front door.
We would have to check to see if they're...
Over here, what's her name? She should take care of that.
I don't understand who you're saying is responsible for taking care of it.
She hired that lady. She should make her sign it.
Well, no, it should be all people who are hired in the Town of Lebanon work for the Select Board, correct?
No.
They don't work for you.
The deputy clerk works for the clerk.
Yes, I, okay.
So she hires and fires.
Right, she is her supervisor and the town clerk answers to you, correct?
Yes.
So in result, you guys are the boss, then the town clerk, then the deputy clerk, right, is what I'm saying.
I will check with Jordan to see if he's giving them out.
Okay, thank you. Also, Mary had asked you in regards of a three-year plan for the NIAID, which the state and the TTP are looking for, a three-year plan. And you had Christine said that you would look into it. She's been back twice asking about it and still keeps getting it's, you'll look into it, but I don't know if...
A three-year plan?
Yes, it's a three-year plan. And also, Mike had discussed it when he had come in and asked about a dual meeting with you and with the Milton Selectmen. And I know that that's planned for after the first of the year, but when you get in front of the Milton Selectmen, I'm just wondering if you have even considered that three-year plan that was presented here or if you have not.
I don't, I don't have to go back and look back through my minutes or look at it because I don't know.
Why do we, why do we have to bother with that? Now, wait a minute. Let me finish before you start throwing words around. The fact is, the state don't recognize our ordinance on the power line and they can do what they want over there.
I can, no, yeah.
That's a part that's troubling me. You understand?
I don't understand what the power lines have to do with the NIAID.
She's talking about the nose spray.
The herbicide.
They can use the herbicide now.
Right.
They know that.
That's right.
The state can use it in the pond.
But not on the power lines, which is where our ordinance...
The state would use it on a power line. Central Maine can't use it. That's, I'm troubled by that.
I'm a little troubled by that thought, too. I'm not sure it's exactly right. I don't think the state can come in and put that on property that's owned by somebody else. I don't think they can.
No.
But the...
I'm not going for that.
Yeah, I know, and I understand that. That wasn't part of my question. I'm just wondering if...
It was said right here, the state can come in and, what was it, hose it or whatever?
Into the pond.
Into the pond, yes.
Right.
Because it's not a private concern. Central Maine is a private entity.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So...
So what does that have to do with the NIAID in the pond?
So I think that, you know, we need to talk to the three...
It doesn't make any difference. We say they're going to do what they want.
So, okay, and my final question was that Dana's been asking and asking and asking about the case for the Boston Post cane.
Boston Post cane.
Right. So on 12/6, he asked about it again and Christine said that she would speak with the town clerk regarding finding the case. And Roy said that he was going to be trying to work with the town clerk on identifying the oldest resident in town to give them to...
We've all been trying to find the oldest resident.
What have you done to find them?
Well, I asked old people. What else can I do?
So what about the case for the...
The oldest, right?
I don't know about the cases.
Russell was the oldest. I believe he was.
Okay, so how old was Russell?
I thought he made a hundred, a hundred and one. I'm not sure.
So basically, we have to put it out there to find anybody that's around 100 years old and try to have them identified, correct?
I don't know what to say. I just, I asked Ronnie, I asked Bobby. They knew everybody in town.
Uh-huh.
And...
So who did they say?
Well, after Russell died, they don't remember who's left.
Well, I know you have a couple of people in their late 90s that are living over in Soul Shores right at this minute. And if they're the oldest person and they should be getting that Boston Post cane before they pass away, it would be nice to get them that designation as the oldest person in town, is kind of what I'm saying, you know? I mean, I think it's not something that's like going to cause our budget to crash or whatever, but it would be nice to continue that tradition instead of leaving it on top of the fire cabinet, you know? And just to tell you, I went on that website to look at, like, the stuff about the Boston Post cane and the last designation is by Jason Cole to somebody like back eight or nine years ago. So it hasn't even been...
You have one on what? So it's been a selectman?
Yeah.
You have? Because it's not at all on that website, the Boston...
It's been a selectman.
Well, somebody here should be reporting that...
I can't remember her first name, Mrs. Burney. She was our last one that we gave out.
And that was recently, Royce?
Yeah, she passed. Well, it's a year and a half ago. I've been selectman a year and a half.
Right.
And I was here when they talked about it.
So, did you give, actually give her the cane? Or you gave her a certificate? Yeah, well, I don't know, Royce, that's why I'm asking.